Good evening, everyone. Do you wouldn't mind just coming on in and having a seat? So this is the Town of Plainfield Public Information Meeting and the board's in like for the Town of Plainfield will hold this meeting to discuss the demolition of the old Plainfield High School and the opportunities to apply for demolition costs to future grant applications. The public hearing will be held tonight at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall, M E F, and we'd like to start right now. I do appreciate the fact that you've come out to listen to what opportunities we have for the town. And I just want you to know that we are all responsible for any liabilities that could occur at this property. We had been discussing a plan that will require your vote to allow us to use up to $500,000 to demolish the building. And then a second vote to use the cost of that demolition to be applied to a grant as a match in order to construct something on that site that will hopefully serve the community for many years to come. So with that, what we'd like to do is go through some of the... All right. So we're going to discuss...
Okay, a lot of the pictures that were in here, they're all taken in February when it was really cold and icy. And you can see how bad inside ends up a few points. I think Kevin already went through this right here. That's what it is speaking about. Okay, now this is the school in its current condition right now.
So while you're showing those, I would let people know that this building was built in 1924, and addition was placed in 1961. That addition was demolished in 2005 to be worked for the new high school. That annex has been abandoned for over 17 years. Extremely dilapidated due to water infiltration, deemed unsafe by structural engineer, condemned by the town official and the building official and the fire marshal on February 3, 2022. Rehabilitation is no longer viable, and the demolition and removal of contaminants are estimated at about $500,000. Yes, no matter what, we'll have to go anything out that area because it has old paint and things in it.
That's all paracite pile, and it's been frozen. I've thought of it so many times here, it's just holding on. You see the concrete's all cracking, rebar's coming through. Lot of snow back February. That's one of the roof scuffers draining right directly into the building.
Okay, so if you hold there. So we have plans. We've been working on some plans for the facility. Again, what we have is not feasible. We've already... We already have a town hall. We already have a recreation center. We already have a library. And these are the things that were discussed at the public meeting last time. What could you do if the building was usable? Since we already have all those facilities, it really wouldn't make sense to carry on and try to build something else at another cost, another bond. So we talked about having a community pavilion. And creating that pavilion could serve for both farmers markets, general community, recreation use. We'd like to be able to re-engineer the overflow parking lot across the street from the high school. Create a garden, a community garden that would include whatever you need for fruits and vegetables and pollinator flowers. So let's talk about how that happens and how do we get to that meeting. Very quickly, the issue here is that a community challenge grant can leverage up to $500,000 that we vote to do that. And that money then would be for demolition costs. And you would actually, that's 25% of what you would be able to put up. So if the town says we expended the $500,000, you could be able to put up something up to $2 million. And listen, make this very clear. You're taking the money, requesting to take the money out of the general fund for the demolition costs. That's the only time we're going to go to the general fund to ask for money. That's it. The rest of it would be done within that budget for the $2 million. So there's no money coming out of the general fund. So why the pavilion? Well, it is low maintenance. Trucks or crap here, trucks, things like that. So that really expands this tremendously. We also have endorsements from Northeast Council of Governments. They've partnered with us and add a bus stop. So in part of that space, they'll explain that if you were to want to start a community garden, you wanted to have part of it for your own garden, you can call ECOG. They will take you to that spot. You do your garden, and they will then take you home. If you're within three quarters of a mile off of their route, you call them ahead of time, they'll pick you up, and again, they'll drop you back home. And ECOG, the rest of the share, I think, is free. After that, I think it's just a dollar for the ride. So it's very reasonable with people who actually really need it. We've talked to and asked for a letter of recommendation from the Plainfield Ag Commission. Thank you very much. We appreciate your input of that too, because it helps to understand what are the needs of the community and what you'd like to have in there. So that's why we also added a pollinator and putting those things on are fantastic. We've spoken to Northeast Connecticut Chamber of Commerce, the PBA, Senator Summers, State Rep Andoffinay, and today we had the letter in from Congressman Joe Gordon. What that does is very simple. If you were to vote yes on this today and then vote yes on the... We have to put a referendum. You have to vote on September 27th for the referendum, not 26th. And then if you did that, you have all these people who are very supportive of this going forward. It makes the applications that much easier. And Jordan's already in contact.
Want to go through with that, Rick?
Yeah. All right, we can let up the next...
Would you let Rick just speak on some of this?
Yeah, just... Yeah. So if you wouldn't mind, we have Rick Rivera, who helped us out with some of the renderings. Would you go to the next two slides?
Rick, would you let me bring these up front a little? Oh, you don't want to stand over?
Just to make sure I don't forget everything.
Either way, I'll start off, Kevin. Good evening. For the record, my name is Rick Rivera. I'm a professional engineer with the promise of a thorough architecture program. Certainly, you've been in Plainfield over 20-plus years, certainly supportive of local causes, and this is certainly one that is reaching year in, year out to myself and to us. I've had the opportunity to go through that building with a rocker and a self pile two times. Only '09, when it wasn't quite to the degradation point that it is now, although even at that point, I felt very strongly, from an economic standpoint, it'd be better certainly to be taken down. Certainly, it would cost you more to repurpose that than what to actually go and start from scratch. And then circa '18, '19, pre-COVID days, we're back to again, of course, the organic degradation is in the free soil cycles of after you bought the building at this point, where it truly is structurally unsafe. It's certainly a nice area. It's a nice part of town. We're involved in the bandstand and the farmer's market in the Putnam area. Now, anybody knows me, not politically, but I'm an engineer, but certainly come from a political family. And you look at what they did, the multi-use pavilion, certainly much smaller than this in Putnam area, and that does a nice thoroughfare in the town as this would be. Quite frankly, that gets a tremendous amount of use. So in bringing the folks at the front table, Gordon and Park and Kevin together, the guys, you know, let's work on a program. Let's look to see what the town may desire in this area. And, you know, really, your program, your idea, what do you not have? What would work on that property? What would work well with the adjoining properties and adjoining community? Truly, the major adjoining property next to it is the high school. And as you're working through, you know, an architectural program, how can you support them? Offer saws for, you know, football games, other college football player, graduations, you know, that type of thing, you know, overflow parking for plays. And then doing all the urban development, quite frankly, you're looking at what works in other towns. Farmer's Market, you know, certainly always works, but a gazebo pavilion like that, it's not uncommon to have craft shows, you know, quite frankly, garage bands. It's an open, maintenance-free, attractive-looking, reasonably inexpensive structure with a multitude of uses and adds to the community and the fact that you don't have that someplace else. So these guys have actually given us the opportunity, gave us some ideas. And if you want, we can walk through some of the ideas that we have from a site developer standpoint, potential. Again, these are conceptual players.
Just wanted to make sure. I know there's members here from the Board of Education, and I know you have other meetings you might have to go to. But you all said it, if you wanted to make up these things.
I do have a question. Can we vote absentee?
I can't, I'm sorry. We'll get your name, and I can't quite hear you, sorry.
Heather Smith?
Yeah.
Can we vote absentee? Like, if we have to leave for our other meeting, can we cast?
Unfortunately, you have to be on-site.
I could be correct again.
But I just wanted to make sure. I know they had to go to other meetings that we're up against right now. So I do appreciate that you're here to listen, but let me go through and see what we missed on the highlights.
From a highlight standpoint, we basically worked through a program of what the desires for the tower. We injected what we've designed and see work in other towns, whether that fit into Plainfield or not. When they were really started out with a site development program, that's an area that already has an access coming in. It's got a curb cut, it's got an access parking lot, you know, across the street, certainly served by the water, and so is power at this point in time. Huge field in back of it, conjunction with the board of ed. So if you don't mind, Kyle, let's segue into the site piece to begin with up on the board and kind of take a look at what we've done and tried to utilize the existing entry coming in, some of the existing granite, some of the existing lettering, the proximity to Route 12 while the thoroughfare coming south. We accented some of the existing lettering off the building. We mimicked some of the existing colors from the, you know, from the school and tried to tie that in with the general architecture. The parking lot and that certainly could be used for overflow parking, vegetation spaces. We looked at the community garden piece. We looked at a potential dog park. And then the back area was essentially what Kevin had alluded to earlier, and truly a multipurpose area, you know, recreation, food trucks, a larger bandstand, some of the things that you don't have otherwise in town. But truly, it's a nice complement to the major piece, which would be the pavilion piece.
Basically... Could you go back one slide, please? I just wanted to fill in some of the blanks that we want to hear. This lot right now that you see is obviously a, I would call it a washboard style parking lot. It's not good at all. We wanted to actually expand it and make it so that the parking space would be paved, leveled, proper water runoff, and there's lights throughout. There's also a push-button crosswalk area that we're working with a safety OT on, so a safety cross. We talked with ECOG about having this as a bus stop so that you can actually utilize that site easier. And some of the other things, I just wanted to make sure we mentioned, is that when this goes into fruition, we look at what Putnam did. Putnam basically rents out the facility multiple times, so they use it all year long. And so there's money generated coming in. I just wanted to say that before I got earlier on, but thank you.
Now, thank you, Kevin. Again, this was a plan that we threw ideas out, but quite frankly, was put together by the folks at this front table for revitalization use. With that being said, Kevin, initially, we talked about parking in that front parking lot pile, was roughly 120 or so spots. The parking lot area was, I think, roughly 30. Also access for, if you're doing a farmer's market, to be able to get vehicles in there, unload, if you want to have an art show, a craft show, a car show, certainly could be, could take place in the back lot, but refreshments or otherwise. Well, from a standpoint, roughly 10,000 square feet. Storage in the front and back with facilities, kind of hounds it and manages a similar architecture to the school, the existing school and the proposed school. You know, either stamped tree or papers on the outside, the software picked it up slightly. And that's the access really looking to the south, but some nice architectural features. The wall up in front, we blew that out, probably the plant would be utilized, the letters of the existing school, it could be a seat in the back that has the space for it as well. Again, these are conceptual plans, but what we felt was an attractive building and something that certainly would be even with a community and serve the multi-purposes. Perhaps, Kevin, you can talk a little bit about the feature wall and the backside of that?
Yes. So you can see that we, like we mentioned, we were replacing or reusing, we're reversing this, which is coming off of the school, this is Plainfield lot. We also wanted to make sure we understand the history. And the history of this building is, as it is mentioned before, this is your first Plainfield high school. So we want to respect that history and want to be able to incorporate that into part of the building. That's why we'd like to work with the Historical Society to say, you know, this is a Plainfield from there. But anyway, we wanted to work with them. We did speak with Ruth a little while ago on that, and that was one of her issues. We should want to make sure that we respect the fact it was the first high school and carry that history forward. So that's why we wanted to try to do something incorporated into some of it. You notice that standing from one end and looking in, so it would be there. Actually, that should be through the road as well. So you would see from the roadway, you would see Plainfield, and you'd see that sign.
Can you turn up the volume just a little bit on the speaker? Is that possible? Speaker, pull it to the speaker.
I'll try. All the time, haven't been able to hear now.
Any better? Is that a little better?
Yes.
Okay.
You're fine.
I'm glad to speak here.
You guys stay right by it.
To the mic.
I'll get up close. Usually, I'm the guy that say, want to calm down. What did we...
Go to the microphone.
Hold on. Don't believe me. I won't say, guys.
Oh, boy.
Maybe he's smart, he's got a good...
He must have closer to you.
With that being said, what did we miss, folks? Square footage and people in the surrounding areas, multipurpose area. Certainly, with the area having back something that could be added to, could be grown. The folks up here had a number of incredible ideas that would, quite frankly, supplement or complement that major pavilion in front with an open-air structure like that. Many, many towns start out with a farmer's market. Next thing you know, that is one day a week, four or five days a week, especially in the summertime, from, again, garage bands to art shows to dog shows, to anything that wants an open-air pavilion that will bring towns folks together for the benefit of the town. And that was really the primary agenda in putting this together. Colors, features, overall size, final site plans can be worked out, but we felt strongly that it would be a nice complement to Plainfield. With that, if I could answer questions either from the board or otherwise on our general concept plans, I'd be happy to do so.
And if you have a specific plan or question concerning the actual grant and how that works, we also have a grant writer here to answer any of those. Just to make sure that we understand what we can do with this property. Again, we talked about how we could lease or rent it out for different events. We would have someone who would be the scheduler for that. But we have two people here right now that offer to be schedulers, so we can make sure that we have it done properly. And that goes with scheduling with the Board of Education as well for any of their events, so that way we don't overlap, double look. So we'd like to be able to use it like that. So again, any questions for the engineer? If you have a question, if you wanted to walk over and take a look at any of the renderings, or if you have anything with specific questions, whether it be grant, whether it be what we're proposing. And again, these are conceptual renderings, so we can make some changes after if we have to.
One, no, I'm sorry. I made Chuck Stables. I went to high school there. What mine is drawn, so... Paul Field's here. If you wanted to preserve the historical value of the high school itself, do we have any pictures that are taking of the school itself, the building? It doesn't look like it's...
From before, yeah. We do have a few of those, yes.
Why not put a flag up here? Is that not...
Well, that's something we have to talk about in the future. We're also talking about taking some of the brick. I know the Plainfield Alumni Association was wanting to do something with that as well, as well with the brick that comes down. And one problem with that is that when you take the brick item down, it costs a lot to do the cleaning. So there's an offset issue there, but more than often to entertain that with... We do want to keep some of the brick to possibly incorporate it into the facility as well.
What about the cornerstone, is one?
Yeah, we'll probably say that too, but...
You have a question about the photos?
Photos.
That's what this is for right here.
All right. That's what you want.
We're going to have a little history there. We're going to have photos of it. I think we even had photos of it being constructed back in 1923, '24. We were going to put those on there. There probably could be room for maybe eight, 10 photos, depending on what size we put them there. So we are going to, you know, do something like that, you know, so people will know what the school was and show it to you.
One last idea. Weather permitting, kids can have bronzer, if that's possible. Is there any way to incorporate something to put along the side to make it a little bit better, something you can take off and put on, like a screening area? Of course, weather permitting.
That certainly could be an architectural consideration for closing sites, whether it be, you know, a vinyl site or whether it be screening.
What about the light?
Light?
Well, you know, it's hard to be lit.
It would be fully illuminated, so, you know, 50, 60, so it could be used, you know, 24 hours a day.
If we're going to replace the school with this and try to use it for any kind of mileage, the kids use it, so they can... Yeah, certainly. It'll be open to the whole community. Yep, school, same as anybody.
In all honesty, Kai, we've done that in other places where these days they actually do a photo etching of a school. It almost looks like a photograph, but it's typically done on a bronze placard. And I've seen them done as big as 10 by 20 feet, so you could see the silhouette of the school and that type of thing from a distance. I mean, it's certainly not inexpensive, but they're wonderful point, and they're very nicely done.
We're definitely open to all ideas. Like we said, this is conceptual. If anybody here has ideas, we'd be more than happy to hear your ideas.
So at this time... Kind of frustrated from Central Building. Having been through different buildings and environmental issues, on the evaluation of the current building, what is the issue contamination-wise? And has it had, assuming consultants were involved, did they actually look at the soil under the building? My concern would be that if, over 80 years of use, various things get put into the soil, you know, upon demolition, you end up having to...
Post-demolition, they'll be testing again.
Right, but if there's stuff in the soil, it's probably better to figure that out ahead of time. It could be because of contamination, the restrictions put on after the fact that we might need to be prepared for. And Rick, you've been involved in several of these.
Actually, I have, and if I may take the opportunity. I did briefly review the quotes and were quite familiar with the company that they had the lowest bid on this, Kevin, correctly from...
Well, that wasn't the lowest bid. They were the only company I'm talking to because they were state bid company, and we asked them to come and do an evaluation of it, and I do have a report you want to look through.
Pretty confident company. They addressed not only the environmental issues inside, outside, but general soil-wise. You know, historically, I think they even looked at the Phase 1 piece. It truly wouldn't have been a need at this point to do, you know, a Phase 2 because it clearly was not, you know, in a Phase 1, ever a contaminator, so to speak.
Right, but there was a very large oil tank in one of the pictures.
That's water, was it?
No, yeah. That was actually a sprinkler, a water tank, I believe, yeah. But I mean, again, a company like Best Tech has, we've done a lot of work for those folks over the years, and they certainly are, you know, they're not so reputable houses, but those guys are, they're quality now.
They're on the same list. That's why we asked them to come take a look.
Excellent point, though. Excellent point. You know, we get into some of their urban revitalization stuff, it could cost you more in environmental cleanup than down at the start of contrast, so excellent point.
Just so everybody's aware of the things that they found. So they found that there were bulbs and bales that would actually, they offered to do at the time for $10,000, taking 360 bulbs and bales out because they have PCB. The other thing they found was the asbestos in the window caulking. There's 60 windows they used asbestos caulking, and they would take them out for, at that time, it was $42,000. That's what they found. I asked them to do everything from tiles to the mastic for the tiles to the walls to make sure there wasn't any paints, anything like that. So they did everything comprehensive of this, so... Anybody else wishes to speak? Comments, concerns, questions? And for the people who came in late, we'll start this all over again? Definitely give you some time to take a look at the renderings. If you have any questions, you can ask us. Anybody else? We can also put and call this meeting to close at this time if you want. And then we can, again, you can take a look at the renderings, ask questions. If anybody else comes in, we can do the same with them. I do appreciate the fact you came out. It's not easy sometimes to say, I'm just going to drop what I'm doing and come on out. So it is important because it's a new chapter, hopefully, in our town's history. But thank you very much. At this time, we end the meeting for public information. Oh, yes, one more thing. If you have not gone to the table to show your ID to get a piece of paper that allows you to vote, this is the time to do it. That's it. Thank you. Good evening. Again, once again, we want to appreciate the fact you were able to come out tonight. We will have our town clerk read the legal notice for tonight's town meeting. we will have our town clerk read the legal notice for tonight's town meeting.
The electors and citizens qualified to vote at town meetings in the town of Plainfield are hereby warned to meet at the Town Hall of Autoriaum, Eight Community Avenue, on Wednesday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven PM for the following purpose. Item one, to approve a request from the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance for the usage of up to five hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance for the commitment to demolish the annexed building located at eighty-seven Putnam Road, and if approved, to be sent to Town Referendum. Item two, to approve the commitment of demolition cost of the annexed building located at eighty-seven Putnam Road, to be used as a financial match for any state or federal grant program, and if approved, to be sent to Town Referendum, dated at Plainfield, Connecticut, this twenty-second day of August two thousand twenty-two. Kevin M Cunningham, First Selectman, Arthur W Gagney, Selectman, Scott Gardner, Selectman.
Thank you. So, at this time, we're looking for a motion for moderator.
I nominate Kevin Cunningham for moderator.
I second.
Are there any other nominations for moderator?
Motion opposed.
Second.
So, that was, Frank?
Yeah.
And, uh, all in favor of closing nomination, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right, so now we're looking at the, uh, legal notices that you have in front of you, uh, we have had an argument.
Both are moderating?
Yes.
We had to vote for you.
Oh, sorry. All in favor of Kevin Cunningham as moderator, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hearing none.
Hearing none, all in favor, okay. So now, uh, we'll move right into the questions, we do have, uh, the review of those two items, could you, can you pass me down the, the actual notice? Thank you, thank you, all set. So, for those who were here for the, uh, first part, portion of this, six o'clock, and listen to our review of what's going on, um, they do have two questions out there, and, uh, question one is to approve, approve and request from the Board of Select and Board of Finance, the usage of up to five hundred thousand for the fund balance to, uh, commitment to demolish the annexed building located at eighty-seven Putnam Road, and if approved, be sent to the Town Referendum. Are there any other questions on that item? I want question two, to approve and commitment of demolition cost for the annexed building located at eighty-seven Putnam Road, to be used as a financial match for any state or federal grant programs, and if approved, to be sent to the Town Referendum. Questions on that?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote by a show of hands, by holding a yellow ticket in the air that we move this referendum.
All second.
Both items?
Both.
All second doesn't matter.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, the ayes have it. All right, so we'll go through this one at a time, very slowly, please bear with us because it's a lot of counting. All in favor of item one, to approve a request from the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance for usage of up to five hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance for the commitment to demolish the annexed building located at eighty-seven Putnam Road, and if approved, to be sent to Town Referendum, if you would, all approved, please raise that yellow. And please give us a minute. For those people whose arms are getting tired, please keep them up. Have you concluded your vote? The council said? And for question one-
All those opposed.
Opposed, please raise your yellow card. Okay, we'll go to question number two, if you're all set. Question number two, to approve the commitment of demolition cost of the annexed building located at eighty-seven Putnam Road, to be used as a financial match for any state or federal grant programs, and if approved, to be sent to Town Referendum, all in favor, say, raising up the yellow sticker again. You concluded the, okay, thank you, you put that down. And for question two, all those who are no votes, please raise the yellow card. Thank you very much. So, the numbers were the same on both, uh, they are fifty-nine yes and two no for question one, fifty-nine yes and two no for question two. Uh, we will now schedule the referendum for the twenty-sixth, and, uh, the registered voters, we're doing that timeframe as-
Six AM to eight P.
So, it's six AM to eight PM. Just here, just here, we're trying to consolidate to save some money. But we do thank you, are we have any other questions?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming out.